Have we got quorum?
Yes, we do.
Thanks very much, colleagues. I'd like to bring this meeting to order, please. The third meeting of City Council. It is a virtual meeting during the COVID-19 emergency. City Hall is temporarily closed to the public for in-person attendance at standing committees and council meetings. Meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the City of London website. The City of London is committed in making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council, standing or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519 661 2489, extension 2425. I will look for any disclosures of pecuniary interest, please. While you're pondering that, I will declare I have a pecuniary interest on one item, and that is item 13 5.1, the first report of the Civic Works Committee related to the properties at 745 and 747 Waterloo Street, as my daughter has a cupcake and my wife have a cupcake and chocolate shop at that location. So I will be on that item abstaining. Any other conflicts of interest? Seeing none, thank you very much, colleagues. The first order of business is a genuine privilege to do. We're recognizing tonight the award recipients of the 2020 Diversity, Race Relations and Inclusivity Award. That recognizes each group's unique contribution in promoting public awareness of diversity, anti-racism, inclusivity, and human rights in London. This is one of the great privileges, we have the opportunity to serve, and we have three recipients tonight whom I'd like to acknowledge. The first recipient, in the category Social Community Services, including not-for-profits with 49 or fewer employees or members, is Employ. Employ is a regional champion and immigrant employment council, and Employ is an invaluable knowledge-sharing network of business leaders who have experienced the benefits of hiring globally. Led by executive leaders from industries in London and supported by an advisory committee of community partners, Employ bridges the gap between labor market demand and supply. Their two main programs, Job Match, which screens and recruits potential candidates for employers and mentorship, which connects volunteer mentors with job-ready newcomers, ensures that companies and organizations are aware of and connected to the newcomer talent in our community. So, colleagues, I would ask you to join me virtually as we recognize the first recipient this year of the Diversity, Race Relations and Inclusivity Award. Congratulations to Employ. The second recipient, in the category Youth, Young Adult Groups or Organizations Under 26 Years of Age, is the Guru Nanak Mission Society. The Guru Nanak Mission Society is a completely volunteer-based and nonprofit organization. Members of the organization include sick families and students who can regularly be seen out in our community distributing meals and groceries to people and organizations in need. Twice a year, the Guru Nanak Mission Society hosts a blood donation drive, and every year, in the month of November, can be seen distributing free pizza in downtown London to anyone who would like a slice. Their goal is to bring awareness to younger generations about selfless service, about volunteering more, and about giving back to the community. The second recipient this year of the Diversity, Race Relations and Inclusivity Award, please help me congratulate Guru Nanak Mission Society. Well done. And the third recipient of the 2020 Diversity, Race Relations and Inclusivity Award is Melanated View Open Tabs. This is in the category of small business and labor with 49 or fewer employees or members. Melanated View is a locally-produced TV talk show that focuses on opening the dialogue about various topics related to being Black in Canada, as well as issues surrounding racism, stereotypes, and image. Airing on Rogers TV London, season one featured five Black Canadians engaging in conversation with the community through the show and social media platforms. Individuals share their stories, they ask questions and learn from each other, to build bridges and contribute to unifying the London community and beyond. Melanated View has filmed one season, and a second season is anticipated with the intent of opening up the show to a wider audience. Please help me congratulate Melanated View Open Tabs. Well done. So because this is virtual, colleagues, one of the things that we will be doing is we will be providing them with certificates to acknowledge these awards. And again, on behalf of City Council, to Employ, to Guru Nanak Mission Society, and to Melanated View Open Tabs, our sincerest congratulations. Once again, a big acknowledgement to these three extremely worthy recipients. Well done. Thank you very much. I am not aware now, colleagues, of any confidential matters to be considered in public, but I would like to change the order to move item four, council in closed session, and the third report of council in closed session to after stage 13 bylaws. Is there a mover? Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Hillier. Any discussion? Then we'll call the vote.
Just one second.
Counselor Kaya Baga, you have your hand up, please.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to do a recognition. I think we skipped that part.
Let me apologize. The recognitions that I did were the inclusivity awards. Let's do this, if we can, please. I do not have any concern about going back to that. If you just will just do this vote unless we have a few moments.
Thank you so much.
Actually, the clerk is just setting that up for votes, so I apologize to you, Counselor. I should have asked for other recognitions. I wasn't aware, but please go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recognize that Black History Month, which started yesterday on February 1st, and share a little bit about Black History Month in Canada. So during the month of February, Canadians celebrate Black History Month, which celebrates people of Black and African descent and their contributions, and all Black Canadians and their communities, who throughout history have done so much to make Canada the culturally diverse, compassionate, prosperous nation that it is today. And I just want to take the time to recognize that and to wish everyone who is celebrating Black History Month a great celebration. There is a lot of events that are happening across the city this month. I hope my colleagues and you all will be able to see that and participate in the various activities that are taking place. So happy Black History Month, everyone.
Thanks very much. I appreciate that, Counselor Kaya Baga. I do know that there are a number of events and activities. I'll be participating, one on Saturday, and I'm sure Counselor Kaya Baga will be there amongst others. Any other recognitions? All right, thank you very much. Then, in that case, I will now take us back to our vote. I'm advised by the clerk, we're getting very close to that vote, so pardon me.
Close the vote, and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Colleagues, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes for the second 2021. I'll look for a mover, please. Counselor Hillier, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. Thank you. Any discussion?
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you, colleagues. Item six, we have nine communications, five which are related to item six, 2.4 of the second report of the Planning Environment Committee dealing with 307 Fanchow Park Road East, four with one added, is related to item seven, 3.1 of the second report of the Planning Environment Committee dealing with 690, 696, 698, 700 King Street, 400 Lisle Street, 701, 725, 729, 735, and 737 Dundas Street, and 389, 391, and 393 Hewitt Street. I'll look for a motion to refer them to the appropriate portion of the council meeting. Is there a mover, please? Counselor Van Mirbegen, seconded by Counselor Cassidy. Any discussion? Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, worship. I'm not seconding that. I actually was still, my computer was still in the middle of updating, so I missed the disclosures for pecuniary interest, and there is on record with the clerk my conflict on 307 Fanchow Park Road. So I'm declaring that conflict now and will recuse myself even from the vote on this communication material.
So noted. So we'll split that, and so the first will be the report of the Planning Environment Committee. It's still been appropriately moved. Seconded, I saw Counselor Van Holst. The clerk says we can do it all at once, acknowledging the conflict so associated so with that. It's been moved, and Counselor Van Holst, you've seconded? Yes, I thought you had. Any discussion beyond the declaration of conflict? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 with one recused.
Colleagues, item seven is motions to which notice. So I will move us to the reports, and the first is 8.1, the third report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. May I call on Counselor Helmer to present the report, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to put the whole report from the committee on the floor. We had a good discussion, in particular, about the head lease program, which is going ahead and expanding by 20 units. If this recommendation from committee is approved, providing for places for people to live that otherwise might not be available. As you know, the head lease program is one where the city takes on the lease and then works with tenants to get them into those spaces and keep them supported in their housing. It's a really wonderful step forward in our overall approach to homelessness prevention, and I wanted to commend staff for their work in making these 20 units possible. So I'll put that report on the floor, and if anybody wants to pull anything separately, just let me know.
Could anyone advise the chair if there's any item they wish to have dealt with separately, Seeing none, any discussion on the Community and Protective Services Committee report?
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you, Counselor Helmer. Colleagues, corporate services committee, I'll call on Counselor Cassidy to present the report.
Thank you, worship, and I'm not aware of, nobody has informed me that they want anything pulled, so I see somebody, I see some hands up.
I see Counselor Lehman. Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, thank you. Apologize to the chair. I need to declare pecuniary interest on item five, 2.4, as I'm a member of the LDPA. Apologize for not declaring that at the beginning of the meeting.
So noted, thank you. Any other items where anyone wishes to declare? Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, worship. Item 2.7, please. Item nine on this agenda, as it was a split vote committee.
So noted, thank you very much. Any other items individuals either wish to declare pecuniary interest or dealt with Back to you, Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, worship. So I will put the remainder of the report on the floor. There were, in addition to one that has a conflict, there were a number of BIA budgets that came through, and they were all quite responsible and in response to the things that are going on with COVID. And 2.7, as you know, is the assessment growth for 2021, and what's notable here is that the province has deferred MPAC, doing an update on land values. So that has been noted in the report from staff, and I'll put the entire corporate services report on the floor with the exception of 2.4 and 2.7.
So noted. Does anyone wish to have any discussion on all items with the exception of 2.4 and Counselor Turner.
Thank you, worship. With respect to item 2.6, the changes in taxable face values and shifts in taxation as a result of reassessments, I've asked this in a different way before, but given the impacts of COVID, I'd imagine that may end up having some impact on commercial land values, especially in the core. And the pause on reassessments by MPAC in light of COVID, what that impact might be, and I'm kind of speculating, but by deferring it a little bit later, instead of seeing a gradual impact of those shifts in commercial land values, we may end up seeing them all at once, once those reassessments resume. Looking at the table in Table A, it shows the commercial land class, a change of about 1.13%. it shows that the commercial land class, a change of about 1.13 percent changed total assessment growth about 0.16. So if there was a 10% change, there might be a one to one and a half percentage shift. And that ends up, I think, ended up being reallocated amongst the property tax classes, so that I think that's what happened. So I think I'm just looking for a bit of commentary about if there, as a result of COVID, ends up being a fairly significant change in commercial land value. What might that impact be, especially if it ends up being, that's not being found until later, if the MPAC reassessments are being deferred?
Thank you. Let's get a comment from staff. Would that be you, Ms. Barbon?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. So with respect to the reassessment, so we do not have definitive timing yet from the province as to when the MPAC reassessment is actually going to occur. So certainly, we know it will not be this year, but, you know, we're in speculating it could possibly be next year, but certainly, we know it won't be this year. So, and what base year they're going to use? So there is a lot of information that is still outstanding that we're waiting to identify. With respect to the valuation when it does occur, the councillor is correct that certainly, if the values, and that could be across the area, although that is likely one of the ones that is most hard hit, those values will be reflected at a new point in time and may or may not be consistent throughout all of the commercial tax base. So as you recall, that assessment, reassessments are typically phased in over the four-year period. So that will have a bit of a limiting impact in terms of the effect on any given year. So essentially, for this year, you won't have any shifts between property classes at all. So when we bring the tax policy report forward, that's one of the things that we'll want to keep in mind, is not to make any knee-jerk reactions, because that could limit the opportunities that you might need to try to potentially change things slightly next year, depending on what the impacts could be. So at this point in time, we really don't have a lot of information. The province has also introduced a couple of new tools. There is a new small business subclass that has been introduced. We also don't have a great deal of information on that either. So we are waiting right now. We hope to have lots more information in the next couple of weeks that we can bring forward to council, and certainly, a very fulsome discussion on the tax policy when that comes forward in April. But I think certainly, you could see some shifts between the property classes. That would certainly then potentially impact the strategy that you may wish as a council to take in terms of what kind of long-term tax policy you would like to implement in terms of objectives when we come forward, potentially in 2022.
Councillor Turner.
Thank you, through your worship. That's how just to keep it on our radar, because I've talked before about the pretty significant tax shifts that occurred in Calgary when there was a change in the oil boom, I guess, and we saw a lot of commercial properties decreasing value and decreasing occupancy. I think COVID will disproportionately impact commercial properties as opposed to the other classes of properties. I think we've seen residential properties generally retain or gain their value. Industrial manufacturing, those sectors have continued. Commercial properties, especially in the core, have been impacted fairly significantly. And my concern is that in a year or two or a few years' time, that change in valuation in commercial core properties will have a shift impact on residential rates and other class rates, because it'll have to be, the loss of that revenue will have to be shifted on to other property values and taxation. So I guess I'm looking for, over time, if we can start to contemplate what mitigative strategies we might use, anticipating that, or to help us, insulate us from those effects later on, especially if those assessments are deferred to a later period of time, and they all hit us all at once. But certainly not a decision for today, but more commentary than anything at this point.
Thank you, Councillor Turner. Councillor Van Holst, did I see your hand up?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just regarding item seven, two point eight, I wanted to acknowledge and wish well Councillor Pelosi for taking a leadership role on the National Board of the Climate Caucus.
Duly acknowledged and well deserved and appreciated as well. Thank you. Any other comments or questions with respect to all of the items with the exception of two four and two seven, or two four and two six? Then we'll call the question.
Councillor Van Holst. Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship, and with that, I'll put four, which is item five on the council agenda, the London Downtown Business Association 2021 Proposed Budget.
Any comments or questions? I know there was a pecuniary interest declared. Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen with one recused.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship, and as Councillor Pelosi mentioned, the remaining item two point seven from the committee report, item nine, there was a split vote at committee. It's the Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement, where the city is receiving about $51,000 from the provincial government to mitigate our costs to revert from ranked choice ballot to first past the post. And I just want to acknowledge you, your worship, for the work you did appearing before parliamentary committee to advocate on behalf of the City of London to try to allow us to maintain the system of voting that we used in our last election, understanding that we had invested quite a sum in making that switch. And I want to acknowledge as well city staff for also doing advocacy on a staff-to-staff basis with provincial staff to acknowledge, at least if we could not keep ranked choice voting, then to at least acknowledge the investment that we had made. Unfortunately, those efforts were not hugely successful, but the province did agree to this amount of money to mitigate the extra cost of switch. And with that, I'll put this on the floor.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you, your worship, and absolutely recognizing the advocacy that you did on our behalf, as directed by council, to retain ranked ballots, as London was the first in the province to do that. Definitely disappointed that we didn't get grandfathered in and allowed to keep it, as well recognizing it just seemed to fall on deaf ears, recognizing that council, the prior council, put in a great financial investment, as our staff also put in a lot of time, about half a million dollars into switching to ranked ballots. I was grateful to have had the opportunity to campaign with them and found they made a difference. Was very disappointed to see remuneration come back in the sum of $51,000 to do public education and poll supplies and some administration services to switch back to the prior system for 2022. I, it's a great financial loss to the city, also what I believe to be a loss to democracy and ranked ballots, so just disappointed. I don't think 51,000 is adequate. I recognize it's better than nothing, but not pleased, and that's why I won't be supporting this.
Thank you. Councillor Morgan.
Yes, and I think Councillor Pelosi makes some excellent points. I wanted to emphasize too, just an example of the types of things that both Councillor Cassidy and Councillor Pelosi referred to as investments. So when we moved to ranked ballot, the province refused to certify the algorithm and support what the enabling legislation would allow. So our clerk rightly acquired some additional auditing, some additional staff, and some additional support from the vendor to ensure that the election would run smoothly and that the algorithm was proven, well-tested, and functioned as expected. That is an investment that no one else would have to do under the regulations as they were at the time. It was and it was an investment right up until the option wasn't there anymore, and now it is a sunk cost. And so those are the types of things that we also should have been reimbursed for. That being said, although Councillor Pelosi will vote against this, I will vote for it, because I think we should take the money that they've offered. I would agree, it does not reflective of the investments we made, but it's better than nothing, and that money will support some of the financial burden of shifting back to a first past the post system in 2022, as the clerk has identified. So I'll be supporting us taking the money, signing the agreement. But I wanted to emphasize that I'm also not happy with the amount. I don't think it's reflective of the investment we made, but certainly I'll support the motion.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Turner.
Thank you, your worship. I'll join Councillor Pelosi in voting against this deputy mayor Morgan made here. And ultimately, we, it's trying to reflect something that's happened in the past, and the compensation for the amount of work and investment. And I think the general community investment that was put into ranked choice voting was significant and not measurable in terms of funds. I, $51,000, frankly, is insulting, and I'm really disappointed in the province's response to this. It was done unilaterally, and it was done without consultation or regard for the impact that it has on our municipality. And I think there's a principle argument to be made here, and that's why I'll vote against it. I agree with the word Councillor Pelosi's coming from on this, and I think we send a bit more of a message by declining the transfer than we do by accepting it.
Any other comments or questions? I'd ask Councillor, or Deputy Mayor, sorry, Councillor Van Holst, please go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. It does seem to put us in a dilemma. I agree with all my colleagues. I wonder if there's a possibility of adding something to this motion, it being noted that council preferred to continue with ranked choice voting.
I might add to your comment there, Councillor Van Holst, I think we made that fairly clear in the direction that I was given by council as I not only had, was the lone municipal representative in the committee to argue London's case and for others as well in terms of the spirit of municipal councils' will. And then I had direct conversations with the premier as well. So I would say to you, and I took the case, I think that's already, that argument's, I think, well-made. I don't think that needs a motion. Any other comments, Councillor Van Holst? Any other comments for anyone else, then? Could I ask Deputy Mayor Morgan to take the chair for a moment?
Yes, and I'll go to the mayor.
Yep, no, I'm actually, I'm sorry, I'm actually trying to get everyone through. I realize now that Councillor Kayabaga had a comment. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you, I just wanted to, one, echo my colleague's comments and also support the comment of Councillor Van Host, that there should be, in addition to a letter, an additional letter to the province refusing this money. One, because I think that it's an insult, and two, I do not believe that we agree to the position of removing or axing ranked ballots. And I would support anything that resists this move, as it is not democratic, and it's something that we not only spend resources to do, but this money does not reflect all the work that's gone into creating ranked ballots and the positive outcomes and changes that it has created and will continue to create in our community. So I do want to vote against, as I did at committee. Will vote against this and encourage others to vote against it with an extra communication from this council, from the City of London, with a stronger message to the province that we do not accept, not only do we not accept the $50,000 in compensation, but we do not accept the refusal of keeping ranked ballots. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Noted. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and just in case you lose me, I want to let you know that I have a low bandwidth, and I, it does help me if I go off video, so I am able to hear the discussion. So I just want you to know that I have not left the room. When I go off my video, I am here. Like I said, I've got low bandwidth, but I would like to add my comments as well to this discussion. This is a real tough conversation, and I, as much as I support receiving the 51,000, I think we need to send a stronger message about the investment that we made in our city. It was a conversation back in my ward. I originally did not support ranked balloting because of the costs, over 500,000. But council did support that, and coming out of that election, we found, and I know my constituents found, it was not a difficult process. And how we can send a stronger message, I definitely think that this, it should be part of this recommendation, not only about ranked balloting, but about municipal autonomy, that we as municipalities should have the right to make the decisions on how we bring forward changes in our elections. And that, to me, I'm not going to support this recommendation unless we do make some changes in sending a stronger message. I know it's after the fact, but it is important that we do send a stronger message.
Any other comments? Can I go to Deputy Mayor Morgan, then, please?
Yes, and I'll go to the mayor as the speaker.
Colleagues, when, thank you very much. I will be supporting the motion for a few reasons. Firstly, that council was crystal clear about the direction that needed to be taken with respect to the province's position. And it could not have been plainer, it could not have been clearer. The resolution of council was absolute, and there was no misinterpretation of the direction of council to me to go forward. And while it wasn't me that, that asked to be part of the, well, I'm trying to recall now whether I asked to be part of the committee hearings, but I certainly was. But more importantly, I made it, I made it absolutely clear our council's position. And there was no misunderstanding as it related to municipal autonomy, as Councillor Hopkins has acknowledged, and issues around democracy, as Councillor Kayabaga has indicated, and and Councillor Pelosi, I would say to you respectfully, that, to all of you respectfully, that we could not have been more straightforward. And I was that direct in conversations that I had, and I had them with the premier, with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and with the Finance Minister. And it was absolutely clear. They made a decision, they predicated their determination ultimately on having one system across the province, and that was their rationale ultimately. Do you know what? I think what $51,000 can do in terms of a lot of good in certain places, and I don't dismiss that lightly. Nor would I, nor do I believe that there will be, and in fact, I'm convinced there will be no additional financial supports. And if we turn it down, then it goes back into the provincial treasury, which I'm not prepared to do. I don't think that's appropriate. We can use that money for a number of good things. And so this is their absolute position, and they were, and they couldn't have been clearer to me. We don't like it, I get it, but at the same time, we are creatures of the province. They have directed it accordingly. So colleagues, I am asking you to support the motion to take the monies that move us back to the first past-the-post system. If not, then we have to find $51,000 in our budget to be able to move that, because the clerk was really clear about the monies needed to do that. The fact they didn't recognize the $500,000 plus, as Deputy Mayor Morgan said, of sunk cost. I understand that. We certainly argued, I argued strenuously, to have as much of that as possible. In fact, so you know, I asked for the full amount, and then, and then after that, I thought it could be negotiation. At one point, I was even somewhat optimistic that we might get something more At one point, I was even somewhat optimistic that we might get something more than the monies associated with first-pass-the-post. We were not successful. They will not move from that position, we can do whatever communications in addition to that, but I would absolutely tell you to turn down the money that we need, that would otherwise have to come out of other funding sources, particularly in a year where we're going to be looking to the province for some probably $20 million in 2021 to get us through our shortfalls associated with COVID. It is not the time to reduce commitments from the province. Listen, I really get the sentiment, and I get the heart expressed by, by colleagues around the table, but I, but I'm not prepared to turn down the money that's there, as we then ask for the next amounts that, that this city will need as it moves forward during the COVID pandemic. So with that, I don't have any other speakers. I do have, Council Lewis.
Thank you, your worship, and I will just say thanks, colleagues, for the great discussion. I agree with a lot of the points that have been made. I would prefer we were running 2022 under the ranked ballot option rather than moving back to first-pass-the-post, but I will support this motion. That is money that we otherwise have to find elsewhere, and sending it back really only helps the province, it doesn't help Londoners. My reason for speaking, though, through you, Mr. Mayor, to our staff, are there any assets that we have in sunk costs for the transition to ranked ballot that should a future provincial government reinstate that choice for us? We can sort of keep in storage and, and dust off the mothballs from later and put them back into use, or are those sunk costs such that there's no potential future use for them, even if that opportunity comes up?
Let's ask the clerk on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we certainly will be holding on to all of our educational materials that we have, all of the procedures that we created in order to run a ranked ballot process, so we will certainly keep, keep those in place should we return to ranked ballot at a future election.
Council Lewis, you're good?
Yes, that's everything, thank you.
Thank you. Any other final speakers? Seeing none, I'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries nine to six.
Thank you, colleagues, thank you, Counsel Cassidy. For the first report of the Civic Works Committee, and call on Counsel Palozza to present the report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first report of the Civic Works Committee, I've been given no notice to pull on anything. I'd like to recognize Counsel Turner as the incoming vice chair for Civic Works, and thank him for willing to serve in that capacity. Key items on this agenda is dealing with the upcoming environmental assessment work of the W-12A landfill site, consulting engineers for the next step of the decommissioning Springbank Dam, some routine traffic and bylaw stuff, and the Ministry of Transportation for an endorsement of a legal process for a highway interchange for Colonel Talbot Road. And I look to you to see if anyone else has anything they wish to pull. If not, I'll put the entire report on the floor.
Thank you. With your indulgence, Counsel, I'd like to have 13 5.1 deferred matters list by virtue of my conflict. Does anyone else wish to have anything dealt with separately? Deputy Mayor Morgan?
I'd like to make some comments on the Aldersburg Gate, item number 12. I'm not going to vote against it, but I would like to make comments on it, so maybe we should deal with that separate.
So noted, thank you very much. Any other items, colleagues, wish to have dealt with separately? So that's items 12, 12 and 13. Back to you, then, Counsel Palozza.
Yeah, I will put items one through 11 on the floor.
So we're talking about items one through 11, colleagues. Any comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Helmer, or Counsel Helmer, excuse me.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I just wanted to comment on the parking and traffic bylaw changes. Residents in the southern part of Ward 4 are very excited to see the speed limit reduction coming forward to council, and they're excited to see that come into place soon. This is something that people have been advocating for, for a very long time, and I know that it's a direction council's been going in to lower the residential street speed limits down to 40. This is a very large chunk of Ward 4 that's being, having the speed limit reduced, and I want to say that residents are very keen to see that happen. I know that staff said at the meeting that, you know, it will take some time to get the signs up and to actually put the area speed limit into effect, but from the perspective of the vast majority of residents, it can't come soon enough. So I want to say thanks very much to colleagues for supporting the area speed limit approach, and, and also to staff for making this work actually happen to, to get those speed limits reduced and to slow down cars on residential streets.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions on items one through 11? Counsel Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and just following up on Counsel Helmer's comments on the amendments to the traffic and parking bylaw, I know there's a speed reduction in, in my ward, going from 60 to 70 on Gideon, and it is something that the, as we developed in this area, the challenges of moving around do become a concern for the community, and I know they are going to be pleased to see this reduction going forward. But I would also like to make other comments, this agenda is full of projects that are happening in Ward 9 and 2.4, which is the Ministry of Transportation road closures for Highway 401 and, and Highway 4, that has been an ongoing project and a concern in the community in the southwest part of the city, and even though this is a Ministry of Transportation project, it is something that the community is, is really looking forward to, and there's been a lot of engagement and dialogue with Ministry of Transportation, as well as the intersection improvements around Gideon and Oxford Street 2, looking forward to that project. Like I mentioned before, with the development in this area, it is, there's a great need to improve the way we move around out in the West. And, and of course, I want to thank the committee as well with the appointment of consulting engineers for the Springbank Dam. This is the decommissioning and the design work going forward. So with that, my thanks to staff, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Items one through 11? We'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Counsel Palozza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ballot being 4.1 on the floor, which is implementing speed bumps on Aldersburg Gate, as Counsel Morgan wished to speak to it.
Deputy Mayor, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, I do, and I did speak with the resident, and I did communicate to the committee that he had withdrawn his request for the letter, of the content of the letter to be forwarded, I think mainly because they actually won the vote, and a speed hump will be installed. But in the letter, there were some claims made about our staff and, and our involvement in this over the years, and I wanted to clarify that our staff have done an excellent job in trying to serve what is a difficult situation, this community. There have been multiple changes made by our, our roads and transportation staff to try to, to make some of the changes up to, and including the issuance of this survey, which ultimately passed. Some of those changes include some hidden driveway signs, repositioning them, redoing a section of the intersection, putting in some, some curbs and some painted lines for the school route, trying to make the pedestrian navigation a little bit safer. It is just a difficult situation where we have a series of houses that live on a very important access point to a large neighborhood, and it is difficult for them to get out of their driveways during busy times. There isn't really a great solution. This will hopefully cause people to drive a little bit slower, but given the content of the letter, I did want to take a moment at council to recognize that I think our staff have done an excellent job trying to find as many viable solutions as possible, even if not all of those are as, as desired by the residents, and I certainly support them in, in their efforts and thank them for the work they've done.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this side? We've actually had several comments relating to the great work of staff. I know Ms. Livingston is hearing that, and I know she'll pass that forward as well. Seeing no more comments, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you. Counsel Palozza.
Item 13 and 5.1 made the deferred matters list as there was a conflict of interest.
You're putting that on the floor. Thank you. Any comments or questions on the deferred matters list? Seeing none, we'll call
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 with one recused.
Thank you. Now we have the second report of the Plan Environment Committee. I will look to Counsel Squire, please, present the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I believe we will be pulling item number seven, which is 3.1, which is the application with regard to the number of addresses that are, that are there, but I haven't heard of anything else that anyone wishes to pull, so I'll let them do that. Counsel Cassidy has a conflict, I'm sorry, I forgot that, so we'll be pulling that matter also.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to have any item dealt with separately? Back to you, Counsel Squire.
I'll put the balance of items on the floor, I don't have any, any comments.
Any comments or questions with regard to all of the items, with the exception of item 7 3.1? That's right, we'll be pulling six due to the conflict declared by Counsel Cassidy, I apologize. Counsel Turner.
Thank you, your worship, I just wanted to recognize a couple of the reports on here, the State of the Downtown Report and the Inclusionary Zoning Report. Both very happy to see, I think the State of the Downtown Report is an essential, I guess, thermometer on, on how things are going in the Corps, and it's really important for our council to, to be, have their eyes on this, to understand the impact of our investments and to understand the, the role that the Corps plays in the health of our city. Recognizing a few good indicators, or, or, I guess favorable indicators in there, a decrease in vacancy, an increase in assessment value, and an increase in assessment value that, that inflected upwards off the, the trend line that those, those are helpful, and I think will, will serve to be assistive and supportive as we get through COVID and the impacts that it'll have, especially on the Corps, as I was talking about before. The, the move for us to be able to look at the, the steps that we need to take for inclusionary zoning will be foundational for us, so we've been looking for opportunities to move towards inclusionary zoning for some time, and we, we need to, to be in a position that, that we can action that where, as soon as we can. It, I think it's a key piece of our toolkit for increasing the amount of affordable housing within our city, and if we don't take advantage of that, then I think we'll find ourselves well behind of the targets and goals that, that we need to establish to ensure that housing is affordable within the City of London. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I thought I'd seen the, the vote up on the screen, a little ambitious of the clerk, but I think we're good to go now, I think. The deputy clerk, the deputy clerk, I've been corrected.
Ms. Westlake Power is very enthusiastic this evening, so. Counsel Salii and Counsel Kaibaga. Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to zero.
I appreciate the efforts of the deputy clerk, thank you. Counsel Squire?
The first item to be polled is item 307, Vanshaw Park Road East. I know there's a conflict, that's a matter that we have had a public meeting on zoning, we had a public meeting on a site plan, and now it's coming back for the removal of the holding provisions. We did receive some correspondence that's available to the, was available to the committee also to, I don't believe we had any public presentations or speakers on this particular issue, but I stand to be corrected.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Counsel Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, I do just have a comment and want to thank Counsel Squire for his comments as well, because this has been a contentious issue, this, this application in the community, and I, I do want to speak to the fact that we are lifting these three holding provisions, and I'm confident that the city has addressed all the regulatory matters that go with these holding provisions. I think this application has come a long way, when we started, when this application came forward, the removal of trees from the site, that was in the application, and the community and staff and the applicant all worked together to come about to protecting as many of, of the trees as possible. So with that, I, I want to acknowledge as well that city staff have also added the fact that we are going to have our landscape architect on the site to observe the tree protection measures that still need to happen, and to ensure that all the work is done in, 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 in relationship to the approvals that are, are going forward here. And the city has also included clauses in the development agreement in taking security as well for the boundary trees to make sure that they are protected. So all these measures are, are still in place as we move forward with this application, and I want to thank staff again for their diligence and, and time and efforts that they made, as well as the community being involved in this application and the applicant. I always find that we're at our best when we're all working together and listening and doing what's best for the community at large. So with that, I just want to thank everyone.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counsel Lewis.
Thank you, your worship, I'm going to be really brief on this, but I, I noticed that, or I need to recognize particularly the work of Mr. Lambert in Development Services and Ms. Ramloo in Water and Wastewater for going the extra step and reaching out over this weekend, actually, to discuss some concerns and clarify some issues with residents who had reached out through me and through the clerk's office and myself, we connected the appropriate staff so that they could have those questions answered. So I want to thank them for going the extra mile to follow up with those particular questions, not just in detail personally, but to do so in getting organized over the weekend to do that. It's above and beyond, and I just want to thank them for that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will call the question.
Counselor Soli is just coming back into the meeting. He lost his connection, so I'll just give him a minute if that's okay. Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen with one recused.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
The second matter to be pulled is item number seven, which is three point one, which by now I'm sure councils are aware of. It's an application for high-rise development in the Old East Village area. We did hear at the public meeting from the project and some others who had some opposition. I think those are very well represented in the letters. And it is important, I think, also to mention that the Old East Village Business Improvement Association also gave a presentation. They were not in opposition. They were largely in support, subject to some of the, because of some of the changes the developer had made. So with that, I'll put the matter on the floor.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Counselor Turner.
Thanks, your worship. So I can see how this project would generate a lot of interest in the community. And I think it's a general net positive. I recognize that there were some questions that came from community members. And I have one question that was raised in discussions with Unity Project that maybe it's for you, your worship, to staff that might be able to get some clarification on. In the Old East Village Secondary Plan, Dundas Street Quarter Secondary Plan, there is a specific reference to the high-density buildings and towers where bonus scenes shall be provided or opportunities might find themselves. And on that, there's a specific section that talks to the towers of high-rise buildings should be set back minimum distance of fifteen meters from interior property lines. And it states that this separation distance is intended to protect opportunities for future high-rise development on adjacent sites. Perhaps through your worship, if I could just get some comment from staff, the proposed tower is well within the fifteen meters of the interior property line. And that might constrain development opportunities for the Unity Project site in the future. What contemplation and what impacts and what mitigation might there be for that provision within the secondary plan?
Would that be, Mr. Yeoman?
I believe so.
Go ahead.
Through you. Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate the question. Clarification. The application was deemed complete in November of 2019, which was before the secondary plan was in full force and effect. As a result, we've had regard for the secondary plan policies throughout, given that the secondary plan was appealed. But it isn't determinative, unfortunately, to this application. So the applicable policy framework is the London Plan Policy Framework. We have done our best to make sure that we can facilitate development throughout the entire area as well. It's promising to hear that Unity Project may be contemplating some development in the future for that site. There'll be a lot of consideration related to the heritage buildings, of course, too, that are there as well. But we are, we recognize that development does occur throughout the city proximate to each other. And we always do find a way to make things work without boxing people in and making sure that development can proceed in all parcels.
Counselor Turner.
Yes, thank you, through your worship. And you did mention the heritage components that the Unity Project site has. As part of the site plan, is there a requirement for heritage heritage assessment for the development here?
Mr. Yeoman.
Through Mr., through your worship, a heritage impact assessment was actually submitted with the rezoning application and was reviewed by heritage staff. They have accepted the recommendations of the heritage consultants. There will be mitigative measures that will be included as part of the construction, things like vibration monitoring and those sort of features to ensure that there aren't detrimental effects on the abutting buildings. We do have a lot of good examples in the city where we've mixed the new with the old quite well, especially in the downtown. And as we see the Old East Village continue to urbanize over time, we'll be seeing more of this as we go forward. But we'll be making sure we keep our eye on the prize to make sure that the heritage resources are retained.
Counselor.
That's helpful. And one final point in perhaps a motion that comes out of this is the, there has been some interest in the specific site. I recognize bonus scenes involved with this, so it kind of fixes the form under which this might develop. Could, through your worship, Mr. Yeoman, could you comment on the suitability of an H five holding provision for a public site plan meeting? And what impact that might have, either positive or negative or neutral? And if it would be something that was worth considering here, given some of the interest from the community members?
Mr. Yeoman.
Through your worship, a public site plan is an option here, of course, that could be considered. But as the counselor did indicate, given that the site is bonused, a lot of the site plan matters, this are broad brush ones that we generally receive public comment on are actually locked in through the bonus. So we could have a public site plan meeting and bring people in. We just have to be careful that we're not inviting people into a conversation where we hear their thoughts and we really can't do much about it because things have been resolved through the zoning stage. That's the only caution I have. We can, of course, work with the community to scope the public site plan if needed as well. But we'd have to be really clear on expectations for everyone.
Counselor.
Yeah, your worship, thank you to Mr. Yeoman. That's helpful. I think, given that, I think it's still appropriate to make an amendment motion to add an H five holding provision to the application, to the zoning. I think the, it allows the project to move forward materially and allows the community input and opportunity for one more set of engagement. And as Mr. Yeoman noted, I think it would be wise to make sure that the scope of what that site plan meeting could influence would be important. And I think that's quite appropriate. So if I might, I'd like to move that amendment.
Do you have a second for that? Counselor Hopkins. Comments or discussion? I have Counselor Helmer now, next on the docket.
Thank you. So in terms of the amendment, I do support the idea of having the H five holding provision to have a public site plan meeting. You know, I think it's important when we're having internal developments like this, a lot of the issues are site plan related. And I think it would also give people who have concerns, you know, a chance to have a second look at what is being proposed. You know, the actual site plan renderings that have been out there have been changing rather quickly over time as they've been going through different iterations of the design. It's been a while for many members of the public to actually look at the design and having a second chance to see what the final version is going to look like and weigh in on those just before it's actually finalized and built, I think would be very helpful because some of these issues are covered through the zoning, but some of them are not. And having a second chance to take a look at it, I think would be, would be a good step. I have some comments about the main motion, but I think I'll reserve that until we get to the main motion again.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. Just through you to staff, putting an H five holding provision for a public site plan meeting. First of all, I would concur that the scope of that would need to be very, very clear. Because even in the communications that we've received, some of the comments are actually not something that would be addressed through an H five public site plan. But through you to staff, what does that look like in terms of timelines? Does it, does it add any delay to the project?
Mr. Yeoman.
Through your worship, so generally we undertake public site plan usually after the second submission that's received from a site plan. I will have a first submission that will provide the initial comments and issues. We'll resolve a few technical issues and then that's when it's appropriate to engage the community when a lot of the major details are known and people can comment on them at that point. As a result, it can add a bit of time to the process, but it's not insurmountable as part of the review.
Counselor Lewis.
So I'm just wondering, and I know that I'm probably asking you to ballpark a little, Mr. Yeoman, but through you, Chair, it could add a bit of time to the process. What exactly are we talking about with a bit of time? Are we talking about, you know, sort of the equivalent of a committee cycle? Are we talking about several months? Because one of the things I think it's important for us to consider is that we need units of housing built in the city at all price points to add to our inventory. And I do get concerned when the issues have been, you know, expressed through public participation meetings already, that we might be putting additional timeline barriers in place. So I'm just wondering, Mr., through you, Chair, if Mr. Yeoman can be a little more, understanding that it might be a guesstimate, a little more specific on how much time.
Can we do that, Mr. Yeoman?
Through your worship, I'll do my best. It is difficult to provide an exact time associated with it. The thing that we usually experience is that we'll reach a certain point, we can have the public site plan and work is still continuing in the background with the applicant. So they're continuing to review and update their plans as well. So it's not like everything generally gets put on hold to have the public site plan and to move forward. What can occur, though, is depending on the comments that are received from the site plan, that can then impact the actual review itself as well. And that potentially can add additional time for those discussions too. So that's, I can't give you an exact time, but that's sort of the general parameters and hopefully that's helpful.
Counselor.
Okay, thank you. That is, I'll listen to other comments on this. I'm not sure that I'm prepared to support it, but I'm open to hearing what other folks think.
Well, then let's hear from Counselor Hopkins, please.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I'd like to thank Counselor Turner for bringing this forward. And for Counselor Helmer's comments too, I know he's the ward counselor and they mean a lot as well to me. This was a conversation at PEC and we did attach the the public's comments to this recommendation. But I am comfortable with bringing this H five holding provision forward, given the number of concerns. And it just is something that I've heard loud and clear from the community, the need to still be engaged with this project. I appreciate Mr. Yeoman's comments about scoping. I think he was quite clear in making sure that we are being transparent with the community, what they can and can't comment. But that will, that will move forward. So very supportive of the H five, understanding that, given the number of concerns we heard, and we heard one thing I really appreciated from the community was the affordable housing and how can we do more or affordable housing when we do these large projects? For instance, rent gear to income. I really appreciate some of the conversations that came out from the community with this project. And I hope that we will continue these conversations, maybe not so much changing this application, but how we move forward with other applications, large-size applications like this will be quite interesting. So again, appreciate Counselor Turner bringing this motion forward.
Thank you. Counselor Squire.
I just want to comment on the, on the holding provision. One of the things that I sort of heard loud and clear at the meeting from the local association was that they had had a very detailed public process and a very detailed public meeting to go over any number of matters related to the project. So I'm hesitant to put in another layer of that where people may come away disappointed and say, well, we want to, we want to do this again. We want more input and we'll be saying to them, well, no, it's really limited here. You can't have the input on the areas which you might want to have input on, particularly where there's been a lot of input and meetings in the past. The other thing is that I don't think that is what is being asked for necessarily by the Unity Project. And I think the correspondence we've received today made it pretty clear that they wanted more than a holding provision. So I think we would be responding in a way that the Unity Project is not in agreement with if we put a holding provision. And we may be putting more layers of decision-making on a project that the vast majority of the rest of the community has been through a process with and is quite happy with at this point in time. So I'm really hesitant to put the holding provision in place.
Any other comments or questions? Could I ask Deputy Mayor to take the chair for it, please?
Yes, and I'll go to Mayor Holder.
Thanks very much, colleagues. I, I was made aware of the suggestion around the holding provision this afternoon when we received the suggestion from Counselor Turner. I think it's, I think it's very legitimate consideration and I've heard loudly the the comments from the ward counselor. But I'm inclined to agree with both Counselor Squire and Lewis, but particularly Counselor Squire, as he talked in terms of what the general intention was. I think when I heard from the Unity Project, the senior volunteers there, they were talking about a significant number of units to be turned into into affordable housing beyond the ones that have been agreed upon to this point. And I think that was their sole focus. And then I heard from Old East Village BIA, who I think was generally positive on this direction. And I would agree that I'm somewhat mindful of the, of the time constraints it puts on on this particular developer. As we all know, time is money in this and the longer it's held, then the more costly it becomes as a project. And so I'm not inclined to support the amendment. And at the same time, I'm mindful that the comments, I think, made by, by council members who do support it, I think they've been very sensitive to trying to give the community that much more input. But there has been, I think, a huge opportunity for input and I think it's been well received. So I'd wanted to register in advance my thoughts around it. And are there any other speakers? I see Counselor Cassidy. Oh, sorry. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
I will return the chair to you and Counselor Cassidy had her hand up.
Go ahead, Counselor Cassidy, please.
Thank you, your worship. I wasn't going to weigh in until I started hearing some additional comments. We generally put in an H five holding provision for projects that have a lot of community interest and for projects that will have a big impact on a particular community. So when we, this is, you know, phase three of an ongoing large block project that's been going on. And when you saw the other, the other phases that have taken place, they haven't been right on done that. So they haven't, they didn't seem to have the same kind of community-wide impact that this one will. I think it's completely appropriate to put an H five holding provision in here for those reasons. We are always navigating this, this issue, this navigation of managing people's expectations. And when, when projects happen in my ward and I'm talking to my constituents, I do my best and I know Counselor Helmer probably does it better than anybody of managing those expectations. What are the kinds of things that, that will come up at a public site plan meeting? What are the kinds of things that their input could possibly affect? And so I, I'm not, I'm not overly concerned about people coming in with false expectations because I know the ward counselor and, and I know how we, how these things have always happened in the past. As I said, this is completely appropriate and it is, it is what we have always done. And that's not a reason to do something, of course, but it is what is considered very normal and appropriate for the large projects with a lot of impact on a community. And it gives more opportunity for regular people that maybe not, are not part of the BIA, that don't have a business. And so they don't regularly interact with the members of the BIA who speak more for, from the business community side of things in that area. This allows regular people who live in the community to come to city council, to come to the planning committee and have their say and to be heard. And I don't think that we should take that lightly. And I think that we should provide people with that opportunity whenever we can. So I will support the amendment.
Thank you. I have Counselor Lehman, please.
Thank you. You know, it's been an interesting conversation. As I said, at committee level, I'm really excited about the potential that the Old East Village has, both in people moving into that area and for the business that will follow. And speaking of that, I think everyone realizes that one of the key components of getting a business area flourishing is to have people living in the area. So I think this is a very exciting project that I want to see. So I think this is a very exciting project that I want to see going as soon as possible. That being said, there are concerns firstly with, you know, affordable housing. My position has always been that the best way to address affordable housing is through supply and demand. The more supply you bring on the market, the more impact you have on pricing. And I'm all, I'm concerned about taking one specific project and saying this has to be X amount of units. That's away from what we've been doing with other projects. If we want to have an affordable housing discussion, I think it should be, you know, a separate discussion from a one-off project. And, you know, inclusionary zoning, we're going to be talking about that. And maybe that would be the opportunity for talk about general guidelines to, to take one project on its own, where the developer is working with certain assumptions that have been used with other developments. I don't think is really fair and right. And I'm, I'm concerned about the undue delay. That being said, I always take my cue from the ward councillor that projects are in, and in this case, Counselor Helmer is very enthusiastic about, you know, this area of town and the potential it has, you know, as I touched on. I think in this case, I'm going to, you know, I think that's tipped the balance for me. I'm going to lean with him and support this amendment with the caveats that I don't want to see a project unduly delayed to a great extent. And for sure, on affordable housing, to pick one project out of many, I don't think is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I will call the question on the amendment.
Counselor Van Hoss, Counselor Lewis. Closing the vote, the motion carries 12 to 3.
Thank you. Back to you, Counselor Squire.
Yes, I'm prepared to put the main motion as amended on the floor.
Is there a secondary? I see a hand up. I apologize. Counselor Helmer, I see a hand up. Is that, are you seconding? If not, I'll go to someone.
He's getting on the list.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions, Counselor?
Thank you. Through the, the mayor, I wanted to just weigh in on the overall recommendation from staff and give a sense of where I think things are at and how I think we should proceed as a council. I've had some discussions yesterday with the Unity Project and some correspondence today. There's a lot of interest broadly in the community about this development. As you can imagine, it's a pretty significant development proposal in an area that's seeing a lot of growth over the past few years as we've seen more and more people moving into the neighborhood and a lot of developments up and down Dundas and King Street, especially in proximity to the rapid transit stations that are on their way. I wanted to talk about what's been requested by Unity Project first. And I'm going to ask colleagues to not support the referral that they're asking for. And I'm going to explain why. Unfortunately, what Unity Project is asking for is so far removed from what staff are recommending. If we were to support a referral, given where we're at in the process, I think the most likely outcome is that this would be headed to the L-PAT and we'd have an appeals tribunal making a decision about what's going to happen in terms of the development proposal. This application was accepted back in 2019, at the end of 2019. And so the clock for making a decision ran out a long time ago. And so the developer or anybody else could appeal this for non-decision if we refer it. And I think based on my conversations with Medallion, who has built several of these towers now and is proposing this fourth one, I think that is very likely if there's a, if there is a referral. I don't think there is a reasonable likelihood of finding a compromise that's acceptable to both parties in terms of affordable housing. You know, on the one hand, staff are recommending 13 units and Medallion has agreed to that. And Unity Project is talking about five times as many affordable housing units at a similar level of affordability and duration. And I just don't think that those two sides are going to come together. And so I think if we refer it, it's very likely to head to an appeal and I think it will go there without a council decision. And I don't think that's a good idea. So my preference is that we make a decision tonight that we encourage people to continue to work together to try and find a way to avoid an appeal. And I think it's important that we put the H5 on partly for that reason because some of the concerns that Unity Project have are site plan matters. And so this is a way of them being reassured that they're going to have another chance to look at that. And an H5 certainly does not slow things down as much as an appeal would. So, you know, it's not in a great place right now. Despite the fact that I would say the majority of, of people think that the proposal is pretty good. You know, they're very excited to see new commercial spaces in a building along a major commercial corridor designed to fit into the existing streetscape. You know, the design of the base of the building is, is very good and it's going to fit into this heritage neighborhood, which is excellent. The step back from the, the base of the tower is also very, very good. You know, we're, we're getting intensity, but we're pulling it back from the main street. So it's not going to seem so imposing on Dundas Street. And I think locking that building design in, which is what is included in the, in the bonusing, is very important. You know, the additional parking is going to relieve some of the pressure on the surface parking in this area. And that's also an important thing for successful residential intensification in this area. On the affordable housing piece, I do think what we're seeing from the very well-written letter and the extremely well-informed advocacy from Unity Project, you know, they're running one of the best homeless shelters anywhere in Ontario, let alone London. They're taking time out of doing that in the middle of a pandemic to weigh in on this issue because it's so important to them. I do think we need to hear that very clearly. And as we're developing policy on inclusionary zoning and doing affordable housing, bonusing provisions in the future, I do think we have to head in the direction of more units, a higher percentage of units, greater depth of affordability. But this has been worked out. The recommendation from staff is very clear that it's consistent. And I know from having been on planning committee for six years that if this is appealed to the appeal tribunal, the most likely outcome is that this kind of development will be approved at the appeals tribunal. And what's not for sure is that it will be exactly as it is in front of us right now. It could actually turn out to be worse. You know, the design might not be the way it is right in front of us. There might not be as many affordable units. We lose control of that if we don't make a decision now and if we just throw up our hands and let it go to the appeal tribunal. So I'm encouraging you to support the staff recommendation. I know that it's not enough affordable units for many people, not just Unity Project. There are lots of people in the neighborhood too who would like to see more affordable housing built in this building and in all buildings. But I think it's reasonable, given what we have been doing in terms of bonusing for affordable housing up to this point. I think this is a good development overall. I don't want to see it delayed for a very long time. And I'm, I'm hopeful that if we can work through many of the adjacency issues and that Unity Project can be reassured that, you know, development and the construction is not going to really negatively impact them. Last time one of these towers went up, they had to, they had some digging into their property as part of the development, you know. So this is a very sensitive issue to resolve between these two neighbors. And I'm hopeful that we can still do that, even if the zoning is approved here tonight. So I'm encouraging my colleagues to support the zoning that's been recommended by staff. I think we can still work through some of the site plan issues. Definitely not everybody is going to be happy. But such is life with residential info like this where we have many different problems to be meeting. You know, affordable housing, market housing.
30 seconds.
Affordable housing. And I don't think it's, it's possible to accomplish all those things in, in every development proposal that we, we deal with. We're going to do better on some than others. And I think the important thing is that every time we deal with one of these issues, we're doing better than we did last time.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Could I ask the deputy mayor to take the chair, please?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Thanks very much, colleagues. I'm prepared to support the, the, this zoning request recommended by staff as amended. I didn't support the, the H5 holding provision, but I think the point that's been made that the alternative can be more challenging and I think from a timing standpoint, I think could have a detrimental effect, both financially and also on what the potential outcome of that building could look like if it does go to appeal. I would also recollect that it wasn't that long ago that so many of us were at the, at the groundbreaking of Indwell right across the street, which will have 70-plus units being built to take care of so many of London's most vulnerable. And I salute them for doing that. So I think that the commitment that the city is making towards affordable housing and rent geared income housing and, and housing with support services is well represented in that area. So I will be supporting this zoning recommendation. Thanks. Over to you, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I have no other speakers. I'll hand the chair back to you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, let's put this to a vote, please.
Counselor Salih. Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 to 1.
Thank you, Counselor Squire.
That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
That's great. Thank you. And now Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, I'll call on Deputy Mayor Morgan to present the report, please.
Thank you, your worship. I have six items in the report. There are two I've been asked to deal with separately. Item 4.1, which is London Hydro restructuring, has been asked to be voted on separately. And item 4.2, which is the confirmation of appointments to downtown, separate for a conflict. I'd look to see if there are any other items colleagues want dealt with separately.
Thank you. So requested. Did anyone wish to have any other item dealt with independent of the main motion? Counselor Salih?
Yes, hi, Mr. Mayor. Apologies for the last vote. I was just having touchscreen glitch. I voted in the opposite, but I won't ask for any change to this motion pass. But I just wanted the minister to show that I support that motion, the past one prior.
Thank you very much, Counselor Salih. So noted. Any items colleagues wish to have dealt with separately? Counselor Van Marburg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If we could, I'd like to vote 2.1C separately, please.
So noted. Thank you. Any other items, colleagues? So we are voting on, the report is presented with the exception of 2.1C and 4.1 and 4.2. Any comments or questions on those? It's been suggested that we, by the clerk, that we pull two entirely and, and then we can pull that apart after that. So we'll do it that way. That's 2.1, colleagues. Any comments or questions on the balance? 2.2 and 4.3. Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to comment on 2.2, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission recommendations update on City of London efforts. I spoke at committee about this. I just, I, I want to just emphasize how important it is that we keep pushing on this, that we keep trying harder. I know when we first talked about this back in 2015, we were, we were fairly tame in our request of staff. And I think there were only three items that we requested staff move forward with. And all of those items are, are moving along and progressing. They do take time and I understand that. But we have made a number of additional strides along the way. Hiring an Indigenous community liaison officer is, is a huge, a huge step forward. And I just don't want us to lose sight and I don't want us to sit back and be complacent. We've gone from a position in the City of London where we didn't have a great relationship. And not even that it was bad. I don't think we really had much of a relationship with neighboring First Nations communities. And I think that we have built on that relationship, especially from the staff-to-staff level. I know our City of London staff have done quite a number of projects with, especially the Chippewa, the Thames First Nations and, and, and also with the Oneida Nation of the Thames. So I'm happy that those relationships and that kind of work continues. And I just don't want City Council to forget how important this is and that we need to continue to push on this.
Thanks very much. Counselor Salih, I thought I had, I saw your hand up. Did you wish to comment? That was from before. All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? So colleagues, then we're voting on all but 2.1, 4.1 and 4.2. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, so I'm, I'm happy to put 2.1A and B on. And after that vote, I can put C on separate.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about 2.1A and B? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Hillier? Closing the vote, the motion carries 15 to 0.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, and 2.1C now.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 13 to 2.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so the next item I'll put on is 4.1, which is the proposed London Hydro restructuring. I was asked for this to be pulled separate. I was unclear if the councillor, it was Counselor Van Hoss, wanted to, to vote on a specific item separately or just the whole motion separately. It wasn't clear in his communication to me.
Do you wish to add any clarification, Counselor Van Hoss?
I'm happy just to vote against the whole thing. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions?
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 to 1.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes. 4.2, which is the confirmation of appointments to the Downtown London organization.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 with one recused.
Thank you, and thank you, Deputy Mayor. Colleagues, I'm not aware of any deferred matters, nor inquiries, nor emergent motions. Therefore, we have a number of bylaws to deal with. Bear with me as the clerk gives me more wisdom here. Colleagues, I would have brought forward bills 37 through 56, which I intend to do, but we will be calling bill 40 separately due to a conflict from councillor Lehman. Bill number 55 separately as a result of a conflict through councillor Cassidy. And I will note that bill 56 is revised. That is the one that we just recently amended. So with that, I will, unless you wish to call bill 56 separately, I will be calling 37 through 56, with the exception of bills 40 and 55. And with that, I'll look for a mover and a secondary as a mover. Councillor Van Holst, seconded by councillor Turner. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 15 to 0.
Colleagues, I'll look for a mover and secondary of second reading of bill 56, accepting bills 40 and 55, noting that bill 56 is amended. Do I have a mover? Councillor Pelosi, seconded by councillor Hopkins. Thank you. Any discussion? Let's call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 15 to 0.
And colleagues, I'll look for a mover and secondary of third reading enactment of bills 37 and bill 40, noting that bylaw 56 is amended. Sorry, councillor Van Meerebergen? You had a comment? I can't hear you, sir. Please, audio.
No, I was simply moving it, mayor.
Oh, thank you very much. Seconded by councillor Lehman. Thank you. We'll call the vote.
Councillor Helmer? Closing the vote, the motion carries 15 to 0.
Colleagues, I'll look for a mover and secondary of introduction of first reading of bill 40. Moved by councillor Hillier, seconded by councillor Cassidy. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 with one recused.
Thank you, colleagues. I'll look for a mover and a secondary of 40. Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Helmer. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Councillor Lehman, this is bill 40, second reading. Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 with one recused.
I'll look now for a mover and secondary of third reading enactment of bill 40. Moved by councillor Van Meerebergen. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries...
Colleagues, I'll look for a mover and secondary for the introduction of first reading of bill 55. Councillor Van Holst, councillor Hillier, thank you. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 with one recused.
Colleagues, I'll look for a mover and secondary of second reading of bill 55. Moved by councillor Pelosi, councillor Hopkins. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 with one recused.
Finally, colleagues, I'll look for a mover and secondary for third reading of bill 55. Moved by councillor Hillier, seconded by councillor Lehman. Let's call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 with one recused.
Thank you for all... Before we move into closed session, as has been our practice for the benefit of those who are watching through various means, we have a number of items to deal with, and I will turn it over to the clerk just to indicate what those items are, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have six, seven items from the Corporate Service Committee meeting. A number of them are property acquisitions to our labor relation matters. And the last one is reporting of statement of claims.
Thanks very much. So with that, I'll look for a mover and secondary going to closed session. Moved by councillor Pelosi, seconded by councillor Van Meerebergen. We'll call the vote.
Councillor? Closing the vote, and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you. Before we turn off our cameras, just to let those who are live streaming this know that we will come back into public session after we've dealt with the matters as indicated by the clerk that is in closed session. Thanks very much.